America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Francisco, Hodgkins.
Here.
House.
Here.
Self.
Here.
White.
Here.
Williams.
Mayor Schneider.
Here. Okay, do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda? Something non-
We don't, is that right, Mayor?
No, okay. Okay. So, as we all know, I'm just gonna sort of set the stage here. What we're—good morning—what we're planning on going through this morning, we're here till noon. We don't have to be here till noon if we don't want to be, but we can. This is a council briefing about Plan Santa Barbara, the general plan update. It's not considered a joint work session. Sometimes we have those, although we can have those in the future, and we plan to on—as we do on a regular basis. And it's not agendized for any action items, but certainly any kind of comments or direction and thoughts from the council is certainly most welcome today. That's part of what today's about. I understand it between Mr. Ledbetter and Mr. Casey, we're gonna get a staff presentation about where we are to date and where we plan to go. And then we will open it up to a—I believe—a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. You'll have about 15 minutes or so to present your synopsis of what the Planning Commission's been up to. The council can have questions to both staff and to the Planning Commission as we go there, about just questions, not comments at that point. Then we'll open it up to public comment, probably be around 10 o'clock or so, but, you know, we'll see how things go. And then after public comment, we have questions and comments from the council. Okay? So that's how this morning should be. And you have in front of you some information, and I'm sure Mr. Ledbetter will go over that in more detail. So, there we go. And Mr. Ledbetter or Mr. Casey, would you like to get started?
Absolutely. Mayor, members of the council, particularly welcome to the new members of the council. My name's John Ledbetter. I'm managing the Plan Santa Barbara general plan update process. And as the mayor said, we're here today to brief you. I will give you a fairly quick briefing on the goals, process, framework, deliverables, and timeline that have brought us to where we are today and where we're going. I'd like to also touch on some of the areas of agreement that have come forth through the process, and also a few of the unresolved issues that the Planning Commission and the community have been—continue to have been grappling with over the last couple of years. Results of an updated general plan, what you can expect, some of the—get into a little bit of the content in terms of the alternatives analysis that's being studied now in the EIR. And then talk about refinements to the Plan Santa Barbara project that have occurred over the last year through the Planning Commission work sessions and what we've heard from the community. Basically, what transpired since the draft policy preference report was approved in 2008. And I'll go over that in more detail. And then finally, touch on the budget very quickly, where we stand in terms of our budget. The Plan Santa Barbara process was kicked off in 2005 with the council setting nine different goals for us in terms of guiding the process. Many of these goals were continued from the last general plan update. And interestingly, these goals have carried through. They've been a pretty consistent thread throughout the process. Living within our resources has been a mantra or mission, if you will, since the '70s, really, and the impacts of growth study, and a lot of our planning history here in Santa Barbara, and continues to be up to this very day. Ensuring affordable housing and opportunities for all economic levels of the community continues to be a paramount and important priority for the community. Providing safe and convenient transportation, another one. Ensuring a strong economy that provides a revenue base, equally as important, advancing regional thinking. Maintaining the unique character and desirability of Santa Barbara. Again, Santa Barbara's character, this is something that's unwavering as a fundamental value for our community. Providing adequate services and facilities. Encouraging public involvement and participation at all levels. This is something that's been very important to Santa Barbara and something that we've continued to place a high value on in this Plan Santa Barbara update process. And then finally, developing explicitly environmentally sustainable policies. This was one of the goals that we were tasked with pursuing. So our progress to date—and again, I'll start at the bottom here—really began in 2005 with the adoption of these goals, and also the creation of the Public Outreach Committee and the publication of our Conditions, Trends, and Issues Baseline Report. In 2006, we took a little hiatus from the general plan update process—the Plan Santa Barbara process—and studied the situation out at Upper State Street, looking at transportation issues and community design issues. We then resumed progress on Plan Santa Barbara in 2007, and this is really when we began to, in earnest, kick off the public outreach process. Mailing brochure to all the city residents to make everybody aware of the process. We held over 40 community meetings, what we referred to at the time as our grassroots meetings, where the council and the Planning Commission collaborated with us in conducting those meetings. Four series of workshops. The Plan Santa Barbara website was launched in 2007. We updated seven of the key boards and commissions as to the process and continue to update them. And then finally, in 2007, the council adopted the Upper State Street Study. That was the—and that's how we wrapped up 2007. In 2008, we began to produce some of our reports, the first of which was the Development Trends Report, which essentially analyzed development patterns over the last 18 years, since the last time we had a general plan update. And then from there, we had a series of workshops, and this was very typical—kind of the typical pattern of how we involved the public. We'd produce some analysis and work, go out to the community, get their reaction, and then fine-tune our work. So then we produced our Policy Options Report. From there, we conducted a youth survey. At the suggestion of the City Council, we conducted a community survey, a community-wide survey, the results of which were quite interesting. Again, they tracked these city council goals as well as the policies that we were developing at that time, but they also, you know, highlighted some of the fissures. And that being the building heights was one of the main ones, and, you know, how split and divided the community is on that particular topic. We continued with public workshops and public meetings, as I had said. And then the culmination in 2008 was the publication of the Policy Preference Report, which was then adopted by the City Council. This last year, 2009, kicked off with the EIR. We scoped the EIR, which is the first formal step in initiating environmental review of a process like this. And the Planning Commission held a number of work sessions throughout the summer and fall. A big part of that initially was looking at the economic study that analyzed what it would take to provide affordable housing if the market was to produce that. And that generated a lot of controversy. There was—essentially, the findings of that report is, geez, you're gonna need 60 dwelling units per acre to get the market to build it. So that stimulated a lot of discussion. And then—but we continue to hold and to grapple with these issues with density, heights, locations of boundary changes, those sort of things. And then at that point, we began to start drafting the reports. And we began that this fall, and the actual reports themselves, the framework, the land use element, the housing element, adaptive management plan, and the draft EIR. And really, as I mentioned, the culmination in 2008 was the Policy Preferences Report. And this serves as, in sort of CEQA, the Californian Environmental Quality Act, in that parlance, is the, quote, "project." So this is what—the set of goals and policies that really are the synthesis of what we heard through all this public input and policy development, and on which the Environmental Impact Report is based. This is, quote, "the project." So, turning now to the deliverables. So what are you gonna see? What is—it's gonna be the output of this process? First of all, an updated growth management plan, formerly known as Mejere, that was adopted almost 20 years ago in 1989. A revised housing element, which is mandated by state law. Every seven years, you have to update your housing element, and it needs also to be certified by the state Housing and Community Development Department. This is a state requirement, and so that will be one of the outputs as well. Updated land use element, and then an associated land use map. And then finally, the framework. And this includes the introduction that describes really what—where the community stands in terms of our long-range planning, and it helps to guide the update of the remaining elements that have now been reorganized into historic resources, circulation, environmental resources, public services and safety, economy, and fiscal health. And it's not just a framework, but there are also some substantive policies in each one of those elements that are included as part of this update, and that will help kick-start, and we feel will be relatively a simpler update process than—you know, this is really the yeoman's work here that we've done with the two sort of foundational elements of housing, land use, and then the framework itself. And of course, the growth management program that really is the heart of our general plan and provides for the regulation of development that isn't a required element, but is a fundamental part of who we are in Santa Barbara. So in terms of milestones, what is this next year looking like? This is an important, very important year. I think it's Paul who's characterized this as our decision year. That's really what this comes down to. We're into the final stretch. As you can see from this timeline, the council briefing is—this is the council briefing. Next month, we have a open house scheduled for now March 18th, and that will be the release of all of our documents. We will release all the policy documents as well as the Environmental Impact Report. Typically, CEQA requires a 45-day review period. However, given the amount of policy as well as substance with EIR itself—it's a full program. EIR covers all the topics—we're extending that to a full 60-day review period. And in that interim period, we'll be meeting with the Planning Commission about two-thirds the way through in April to take public comment, both on the initial reactions—it'll be about a month into it. People have had time to review the documents, digest them, as well as the Environmental Impact Report. And the direction we've gotten from the Planning Commission is, we want to hear from the community. So this—at this point, it'll be mostly a listening session from the community as their reaction to these documents. And then we'll come back to you for our semi-annual joint session with the Planning Commission for direction on—you will have had a chance at that point, as well as the Planning Commission and the benefit of community input, to give us any kind of course corrections or better—course corrections—at that point, so that then we can go back and make the necessary policy changes and recommendations to reconcile that. And so that'll give us between June and September to prepare close to the final reports. And at that point, we'll go to the Planning Commission with all the policy documents for their recommendation, as well as the certification of the EIR. They do the certification of the draft EIR. And then finally, on to you in the fall, in October, for your final review and adoption of all the policy documents. Now, just to touch on a few of the areas of agreement and disagreement that is pretty clear to us, and we've been—yeah, that are pretty clear to us. So, regulate future growth across the board. That's something that's important to Santa Barbara. It has been and continues to be, and that's a real starting point for us. Living within our resources, as I mentioned earlier, it's almost a mission for this community to be aware of where we stand with our resources and not go beyond those. And it really has evolved into a—it's a perfect fit with a sustainable—a future, more sustainable, community. Prioritizing affordable housing, this is one issue that continues to be important and a critical issue for us. Requiring smaller units. As most of you know, over the last 10 years, one of the unintended consequences of mixed-use development has been—it's been great that we've had more life in our downtown, but we have gotten large condominiums, a large expensive condominiums that aren't meeting the needs of our middle-income workforce. So, across the board, no matter who you talk to, whether it's a community activist, a developer, or a nonprofit provider, everybody understands, acknowledges the need for smaller, more affordable units. Preserving Santa Barbara's historic small-town character, again, fundamental value. Enhancing our active, healthy, and walkable community. We've done a great job with that, and people recognize that and understand the value of that, and that the—and again, all these values, they fit together nicely. And then finally, planning for more sustainable neighborhoods. We've had a lot of activity of late—in the last couple of years—of neighborhoods becoming more active in sort of an organic way and doing their own—beginning their own type planning process. And so we recognize this as an important area of general agreement. The tough ones. Building heights, as was evident last fall with the proposition, continues to be an issue that—it's a tough one. And related directly to that is density, and how much density is the right amount for the city. And should we allow more units in smaller buildings? One of the—one of the concepts that has been developed over the last year through the Planning Commission and with the community, and we think that it merits much further serious consideration, is the idea of replacing density with floor-area ratios. And with the idea that—with this, you can control the size and—the size of the building, but you can also get the level of density inside the building that you need to build the affordable housing. And again, this is really the crossroads of how do you maintain community character and how do you still get the densities you need for affordable housing? So this is something that we will be pursuing, and an idea that came up through the community. Parking standards continue to be a tough issue. Inclusionary housing. We currently have a 15% inclusionary housing requirement on all development projects over 10 units or more. And the Plan Santa Barbara recommendation is to increase that to 25%. And we've had, you know, community members saying, oh, it should be 40%, 80%, but there's no consensus on that, and the jury is still kind of out on, you know, how effective it's been in total. So that's another one that we continue to grapple with. And then finally, the priority of implementation actions. As you're all aware, given the tight financial, budgetary constraints we're under today, it's like, well, where should we—where do we go from here in terms of our long-range planning? And, you know, what are the most important changes that need to be instituted in the short term to affect these longer-term goals and policies? Excuse me. Results of an updated general plan. What does that mean? Well, you get the certified housing element, which is mandated by the state, as I mentioned earlier, and we reduce our vulnerability to lawsuits. The state Attorney General's office has been very aggressive about coming after EIRs and general plans to make sure they're in compliance with AB 32 and the greenhouse gas emission standards. And so we've taken a lot of—a lot—made a lot of effort to ensure that our EIR meets these requirements so that we're not vulnerable to these lawsuits. Number three, continuing state funding programs that are dependent on the EIR and adopted general plan. Most of the funding that we've got has been through our certified EIR. There hasn't been a lot of money, but in the last few years, we've gotten $700,000 that we've used towards neighborhood improvements, you know, for sidewalks, lighting, that kind of a thing. So it's not—it's not—it's a significant amount of money. Meeting new planning standards. Again, it's things like reduced unit sizes, smaller unit sizes, stronger designed protections in the EPV that will—that will parallel our new growth. It's those kind of things that are part of this—that'll be part of the output of this plan update. And finally, the leadership, your leadership, the Planning Commission's leadership for the future of our city, and continuing our efforts and traditions that date back to the '70s, from the impacts of growth to Mejere, and now it's up to you. Now, this is the—we're really at that cusp of the next 20 years. So just—I'm almost finished here, just a couple more items here. To give you a sense of some—a few specifics on the EIR. The EIR is looking at essentially four different growth scenarios. This was something that the community asked us to do early on in the process, is really to bracket that there was clear agreement that there needed to be growth management over the next 20 years. And so we bracketed in the EIR where those ranges of growth should be for both housing and for non-residential or commercial development. So the first—the first alternative is really, quote, "the project." And again, if you recall what I was—I mentioned earlier, that the CEQA defines the policy preference report as our project. So that's the starting point to get analyzed. And then you look at the no project, which means if you didn't make any of these policy changes and everything stayed exactly the way it is today in terms of all of our goals, policies, growth management, what would be the impacts? And so that's the second alternative that's analyzed in the EIR. The third one is a lower-growth alternative, and then the fourth one is an increased housing alternative. Just to give you a quick look here, a snapshot of what that means, for the project—the Plan Santa Barbara project—that would mean about 2,800 units and 2,000—or 2 million square feet over a 20-year period. Now, interestingly, this was based on our historic trends of housing that we've—you know, that came out of the Development Trends Report, that we, over the last 20—18 years, saw about 150 units a year. That's—you know, come economic highs and lows, the average is about 150 units a year, and that's—so that's what we have projected for Plan Santa Barbara, the project, but also if we didn't change anything. That's the assumption—the land use assumption we're using for both Plan Santa Barbara and no project. You see a little bit more commercial square footage—if nothing has changed—to 2 million, 2.2 square feet. And then the lower-growth alternative, you see a fairly significant decrease—in the number of units, which would be below what we've typically seen on an annual basis to 2,000 units. And then a pretty significant decrease in the amount of non-residential square footage to a million. And then for the increased housing, and this really—the what the Planning Commission wanted to see here was, how can we further improve our jobs-housing imbalance? And so the idea here was to significantly up the amount of units to the tune of about another 1,500 units over this 20-year period, but really put the clamp—put the clamps on non-residential and keep it at about a million. Now, interestingly, if you look at it kind of on a percentage basis, this housing range between, you know, 2,800 units and 4,0360, it's about a 5% increase over 20 years, which works out to be about a half a percent each year. And similarly, for commercial, you look at that, and again, you're looking about at a half a percent per year of increase over a 20-year period for these—this range of growth. One of the—and I'll touch on just a few of the things that have come through the process in the last year, sort of the refinements on the Plan Santa Barbara project, if you will, has been on the residential unit side. The Housing and Community Development—State Department of Housing and Community Development, as part of the requirements for your housing element, they're quite specific about what you have to provide them. You have to analyze how the effect of the last element was, you have to do a housing inventory, you have to—so part of that was our inventory build-out. They want—you used to just say, okay, as long as you got the zoning capacity to build your allocation, your RENA allocation, then you're good. Well, each year, they've gotten—they've gotten more and more detailed about—you have to make sure that these are viable sites, that they actually can get built out, there aren't a lot of environmental constraints, that sort of thing. So when we performed that more detailed analysis over this last year, we came up with a build-out number of approximately 6,500 units. And this was pretty close to what we had—we had estimated in the Development Trends Report a couple of years ago in terms of our build-out number. So we felt pretty confident with that, and we feel like we can meet our RENA allocation. Now, as you may or may not recall, the—again, the state HCD, Housing and Community Development, they give each jurisdiction—and it's by county, essentially—their fair share allotment. This is the amount of housing you should provide during these planning periods, and they typically are five to seven years that you have to update your housing element. And as part of that, sort of the starting point, is this RENA allocation number. And it's oftentimes very controversial, as it was this time, and our number was almost doubled over what it was for the last housing element. So that number that we have, that we're working off of for this planning period that starts—started in 2007 and goes to 2014, is 4,388 units. So clearly, you can see that we have the capacity to build—to meet our RENA number, as it's commonly referred to. And then the EIR looked at, you know, ranges of housing and said, well, do we have the resources to do this? Can we even come close to building this? So what the resource—the EIR concluded—and you'll see this when the EIR comes out in next month—is that, yes, in fact, we do have the resources to meet up the high end that we analyzed. And remember, we looked at between 2,800 and over 4,000 units as our range of growth. So we're good there in terms of up to 4,800 units. So then the policy question then, again, falls to the Planning Commission and ultimately to you, the City Council, as, you know, where do we—what number do we want to target over this next 20 years, assuming that we have a good means to monitor our resources as we go along? And you'll learn more about that as we get further into this process of—this is what we refer to as our adaptive management program that monitors our growth for both residential and non-residential. Some of the few other refinements that have occurred over the last year have been amendments to the variable density program. We are now looking at targeting the average unit size to about 1,000 square feet. This is the size that both the economics—economic consultants, as well as the local developers, have told us, this is about the size you need for a two-bedroom unit. This is—as well as real estate agents. That's—the most marketable unit for a number of reasons, both in terms of our declining household sizes, but also because of the financial reality of—if you have a two-bedroom, you can either rent out one, you can use it as an office. So this is the ideal average unit size. So we're targeting now our variable density formula. In the past, it was based on number of bedrooms, and without getting into a lot of detail on that, but that's partly how we got into this sort of conundrum where we are now, where we have these huge mondo condos that are very expensive. So this is aimed at addressing that. And also—it also segues into the next point here about affordable housing incentives. What we do then is if the average unit size is 1,000 square feet, we then provide incentives—density incentives—for smaller units. So the smaller the unit, the higher the density, so that we—we're trying to approach this from an incentive-based method. Also, part of that is—if you look at the demographics, our—for the for-sale units, the household sizes are shrinking, so that points to the strategy of having this 1,000-square-foot two-bedroom unit. But on the other side of the ledger, for rentals, the families—the household sizes are increasing. So for the rentals, we need bigger units with more bedrooms, and so we have to look at a strategy to address that side of the ledger as well. So that's where we see incentives for increased densities for rental units, permanently affordable rental units, to address both of these demographic trends we're seeing. And then getting back to this bullet point, the second— And then getting back to this bullet point, the second bullet point about amendments to variable density, our multifamily designation, there was one, essentially, on the general plan now and in our zone, and there's essentially one multifamily designation. And the idea here is you, you bifurcate that into two different designations and zones so that you have one that's a higher density that provides that affordability for those smaller units and more numerous. And that also provides, and this is kind of an interesting phenomenon that has come out of this Plan Santa Barbara process, is that we realized as we looked at the, the planning principles that have evolved, that developing a more sustainable community, and we have referred to these as the MODA concept, and you've probably heard about that, the mobility-oriented development area. We realized that a lot of these fundamentals are already in place for the city here. It's what I refer to as old urbanism as opposed to new urbanism. We were blessed in the 1800s, even from the beginning, when Salisbury laid out the grid pattern in downtown Santa Barbara, that most of our development or our mixed use was on a grid pattern. And from there, it radiated out to the east and west sides where you got multifamilies. And then from there, during the 60s, 70s, you got the subdivisions of the single families. And then from there, of course, you got the open spaces, parks, mountains, and oceans. And this is a, this is a classic pattern, a land use pattern that so many communities are trying to achieve through new urbanism. Well, we have it already. And so, the idea is, you know, we're not trying to invent anything new here. We're trying to really underscore and support those principles that have worked so well for us, you know? Compact development, adjacent to transit, commercial and, and commercial services, access to open space and recreation, easy walking and biking. I mean, these are things that people love about Santa Barbara. So, we're not inventing anything new here. And there was a lot of angst in the community and with the planning commission about, oh, where should we draw a line for the MODA? Should it be really big or really small and da-da-da? And so, you know, we decided, well, let's not even deal with trying to decide what the MODA boundary is, and let's just look at these principles and see, you know, how can we best adopt actions that will further these principles? By, you know, putting your increased densities, when you being very strategic in targeting, making sure they're near transit and near grocery stores, near parks, and community centers, and that sort of thing. So, this is something that's evolved, I think, over the last year or so, in tandem with the recognition that these land use designations really have served as natural buffers between the biggest buildings, the most intense uses, and you start with the downtown core again, where you have your biggest buildings with the most intense uses, and you work your way out, you know, into the multifamily, the single family. And this is kind of classic old urbanist planning, as I like to call it. Another refinement that's come out in the last year is there's a lot of concern by the, by the historic, people that really value our historic resources, that that warrants its own element. So that's what we've done, we've bifurcated that off of community design and devoted one element to historic resources. And then finally, the EIR. California Environmental Quality Act, the goal is to integrate environmental assessment with your policy development. That's the ideal, that's the goal. Oftentimes, that's not done, it's an afterthought. You know, you develop your policies and, oh yeah, let's do the EIR and that. But the idea here is that our EIR is really informing our decision-making here and informing the policies themselves. And we've gotten a lot of good feedback, ideas, and mitigation measures that will be incorporated into our policies for all these topics, from helping to relieve traffic congestion, improving our hot, our jobs housing balance, the climate change issue, making sure that, you know, it's legally solid and bulletproof, solid waste disposal capacity, the whole issue with dehigua, open space, habitat, water quality, air quality, and design guidance tools to help us as we begin to incrementally grow over the next 20 years. Our budget. The Plan Santa Barbara Update effort has really been funded in large part by a general plan update fee. This is something that the government code section allows us to do, to collect fees to prepare and update policy documents, and specifically, general plans. So, this is something we did early on to help us fund our professional services contracts, one additional position in long-range planning, as well as some of our materials and supplies, for a total of about $2.3 million budget. The fee itself was calculated to be 11% on building, and it's levied on building permits. And that was calculated by taking the, the total budget and dividing that by the lifetime of the plan of 16 years. And you come up with about $147,000 that need to be collected each year. And you do that through an 11, that calculates out to about 11% fee. And that was adopted in 2004, and we've steadily been collecting that. So what happened was that the general fund lent us the money initially to initiate this contract up, these contracts upfront, and then each year, we pay back the general fund through these fees. Our professional services contracts, there's been some interest in that, so I thought I'd touch on that a little bit. Mostly, it's been for two areas, assisting us on planning services and the environmental review. Planning services mostly were through MIG, and they assisted us with our public outreach efforts, our 10 different workshops, one forum, the outreach committee facilitation, our website, UPlanSB.org, our economic analysis, and some of our urban design help. The Los Indias Associates, this was helped primarily with our land use data analysis. We had a lot of detailed analysis that was required on a parcel level because of the traffic model that was part of the EIR. And this is something that you get really good results with, but it takes a lot of analysis. And then FMMA was the public poll that the council asked us to conduct in 2008. And that rounds out the planning contracts we had for planning assistance. For environmental review, the URS Corporation, they provided us some help with our master environmental assessment and the EIR baseline maps. So, all of our baseline maps for environmental review have now been updated, everything from geologic hazards and man-made hazards to water quality, habitat, all those. And those are, those are really necessary, and we, these will help us not only just with our general plan, EIR analysis, but over the next 20 years, these help in development review projects as well. And then finally, the AMEC contract was the EIR itself, a big chunk of that, about $500,000 of which was this pretty robust traffic model that I referred to earlier. So, just in conclusion here, I come back to the timeline here and to just try and underscore for you that this is a pretty aggressive schedule to get this adopted by next fall. But it is going to require for us to do that, that both the planning commission and yourselves be fairly disciplined and ready to make some pretty tough decisions. We have a lot of areas of agreement, and there's a lot riding on this in terms of outcomes, but it will require some, some difficult decisions. And as you'll see from, I think, both the, the planning commission, when they have their comments, as well as the public, there's divided opinion on a number, a number of these issues I think have highlighted. But we do feel like we can accomplish this, it's going to be even more difficult with the budgetary constraints, we'll probably be losing a couple of positions in long-range planning, and, but we can do it. We feel like this is doable if we have the support and direction to move forward and wrap this up. So that basically concludes my presentation.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Ledbetter, in the, in the bullet point on the budget for this whole thing, it says one FTE. That was one additional FTE, correct?
That is correct.
So what's the actual number of FTEs that have been dedicated to this?
The long-range planning section has five FTEs.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Couple of questions. One on the preferred growth scenarios. If both the preferred growth, or the scenarios are a 5% to 11% for commercial and a 5% to 12% for housing, but you've articulated in this plan over and over again that housing is the priority, that seems really incongruous, right? Why would we be planning for the same amount of commercial growth as housing growth if housing is the priority?
I think that's a, Councilman Williams, that certainly is a key point, and that's going to be part of the decision. And if you look at the, the greater housing alternative, that's where you begin to balance that, where you have quite a bit more housing and quite a bit less commercial growth. So that, those are exactly, I think you hit it on the nose, the kind of tough decision trade-offs that you'll be faced with.
And guess the, no, that's, that's enough for now. Oh, well, what, what is the legal risks involved in not studying a scenario that corresponds with the RENA numbers that we have been, that has been foisted upon us?
Madam Mayor, Councilperson Williams, it's not so much that there's legal requirements in the EIR, it's more of state planning law that requires that you demonstrate that you have the capacity. And as I said, it's not simply anymore that you have to say, oh yeah, we got the zoning, but you have to really go much deeper than that and look at, you know, how these identify opportunity sites, what kind of constraints you have, and that sort of thing. And they look at it very carefully, and if you don't demonstrate that adequately, then they reject your plan and send it back to you and say, you know, you need, before we'll certify. And that's, that's really what they hold over our head, is the certification of the housing element. None of the other housing elements require certification except the, the housing element. And so, I wouldn't characterize it so much as an EIR issue as I would a planning law certification.
So, essentially, we have to choose between putting that into the housing element or having it likely rejected by, by the state?
I would say yes.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked you to refresh my memory here a little bit. One of the pieces that I recall coming to light during the study process for Plan Santa Barbara was the, looking at the commercial corridors and then coming up with a potential, a development potential estimate for the commercial corridors, that that had not been inventoried previously. And then that became news, that was part of the study that came out. What I heard you say in, in your setup was that we weren't surprised by the development potential that we have. And I had, remember being surprised when that number was, was developed. Can you refresh my memory or perhaps share with the, the room how that, what your memory is at, and what those numbers are?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor, Councilman White. In 2008, we did, we produced, as I mentioned, the Development Trends Report, and we looked carefully at what the build-out was in the commercial areas, the commercial corridors as well as the downtown. And we used a couple of different methodologies, one based on historic trends, another based on averages of build-out at about 20 units per acre, which is typical of our variable density. And what we came up with was a range somewhere between 5,500 and 6,500 as the range. And so, this last year, excuse me, as we delved into it even deeper and looked more specifically at what the constraints were and, and more of a parcel level analysis, then we came up with this number of 6,500, which is pretty much in the ballpark of what we had estimated in 2008. And I do acknowledge that, that with a little bit of trepidation, we did announce that in 2008, knowing that that was a pretty big number, considering what we had estimated 20 years earlier, so.
And if I may, what had we estimated 20 years earlier?
I can't recall, that one I can't recall off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to research that and get back to you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got so many questions, I don't know where to start. But just in general, let me say, I think you've bitten off more than we're prepared to chew. And we're over-planning, and over-restrictive, and imagining foresight that we don't have, whether it's climate change or a lot of other things. Having said that, the one element we're required at this point to have, and we're late in producing, is housing, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, given the, I think, a number of my colleagues wouldn't agree with what I just said, so, given that, if we focused on one thing, it would be the housing element to try to get that done, if we put other things aside, correct?
I'm not sure I understand.
So we can only deal with the housing element and try not to build a whole car here, but deal with part of it at one time?
That certainly is an option, yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I have right now. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam.
Okay. Just so I'm clear on the budget slide you had there, the, the amounts you had were outside consultants, this is the work up through now, it looks like everything is just about completed, and it's completely paid for by the general plan update fee that we're going to be collecting. So in terms of the general fund impact, it looked like the, the fee was supposed to have about $2.3 million, and it looks like the actual amounts of the contracts are about a little over $2 million. So there's a, there's a little buffer zone there in case planning permits aren't as robust as we want over the next 16 years, or, or we, we, let me back up. Definitely, this fee will cover all the outside consulting services, so it's not a general fund impact. So what is a general fund impact is the staffing that we've had all along, which are, as Mr. Francisco asked, five as of today, and that might change next fiscal year depending on what we do with the budget. And that, so, the question is moving forward and what the work that needs to be done, given the timeline you have, we're focusing really on staff resources and putting this to completion as opposed to outside, additional outside consultants coming in, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, yes.
Okay.
You know, we have a very small amount that we could use for some form of implementation, but it's not very much. And so, we think that your priority for implementation is really going to be dependent upon staff resources and the ability to deliver where you want to go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see no more questions from the council. I'd like to invite the Planning Commission Subcommittee to come up, and we have 15 minutes for you guys. And I don't know how you want to divide that up, but, good morning.
Happy to see Commissioner White now as a council member, and he can, I think impart a lot of the knowledge that we've assimilated over the years. So, I think that will go a long way in getting us where we need to be. I'm the Chair of Planning Commission this year, and I'm also recently appointed to the Plan Santa Barbara Subcommittee, taking former Commissioner Addison Thompson's place. But I've been actively engaged, not only in my years on Planning Commission, but all of my years on ABR. And beyond that, like Councilmember Bendy White, I'm the only native on the Planning Commission, I'm the only architect, I'm the only lead accredited professional, and I've really been doing everything that I can to really train myself to assimilate the knowledge that we need to make the decisions that really are very important and before us. But I would like to really just put an overview on the, on the topic, I think, that is important for the Subcommittee, and that is to really create an environment where we have a real dialogue with city council, and we hope that you will engage us on that, because I think these next few months and all this year are really critical timing, we've all put in a lot of effort. This has been many years in the making, it's not only the dollars that you see on the screen for the outside consultants, it's all the volunteer time, the public time, the staff time, there's a huge investment. And I think we're not quite at the point yet where we can really make informed decisions without having the results of the EIR, that's the whole purpose of that. And I think the worst thing that we could do is to not make a decision. It's easy to, you know, kick the ball down the road and, and put it off because it's difficult. But of all the scenarios that we've listed and bracketed for the potential project in the EIR, the no-project alternative, which is what we have today, if we do nothing, is the worst of all scenarios. So, we need to be prepared to make tough, tough decisions and, and work together. I think what we've learned from the current general plan I think what we've learned from the current general plan and the implementing ordinances is that they're very rigid, and they were created in a different time, the world has changed, and we've been locked in with rules that are forcing us into situations that none of us enjoy dealing with, and it's, you know, a myriad of appeals and all the other things, we're really asking for the wrong scenarios to recur. And so we've been suffering from unintended consequences, and we really have an opportunity now to fix that, and I hope that we can work together to achieve it. I think the real goal here is for us to focus on what we all agree with and put some of the petty differences aside. I think last year was a real side trip in political divisiveness, and I hope that we can get beyond that and work together. I think we all love this community, maybe for different reasons and for different attributes. But I think the real thrust of the new Plan Santa Barbara is that it's a different document. It wants to be a living, breathing document with adaptive management that we can control along the way. It's not your car with autopilot, we actually will have a steering wheel, we need to learn how to use it, and we can adjust our course over the next 20 years and not be locked into a rigid course that's been predetermined. And I think that is the key thing that we really need to implement here, so let's keep our eye on that. And it's easy to get caught up in public dialogue and listen to public speakers, and we've all gone through hours and hours in many meetings, and we hear the same people and the same thing, we can all predict what's going to be said, but they're not really the constituents that we're doing this for. It's our children and grandchildren and the future generations, so this shouldn't be about us, and we really need to put on the long-range planning hat here and do the right thing. So I hope we can put our own pet peeves aside, and let's really look at the big picture and move forward. There's a lot of great things here, and even the scenarios that have been listed, I see it as a, it's like a cafeteria plan. It's not like we're going to eat everything in the cafeteria, but we can pick and choose once we have the environmental analysis to know the consequences of our decisions, and then we also have the ability to change our course 10 years from now. If the predictions that we anticipated aren't coming true, we have the ability to maneuver. So, you know, the land use maps, all of those things, the maps themselves, they're not an answer. That's just the palette upon which we can work, and it gives you a general direction. This is the general plan, we're not, this isn't a specific plan, and we're going to work out every detail. If we stayed here to try and create a perfect plan, we would never get anywhere, and we would be worse off because of it. So let's please focus on what's real, and we are prepared to really pass the baton to you, and we hope that you will run with it after all the effort that's been put in. And there's a lot of good things in Plan Santa Barbara, and there's some debatable things, but let's let the EIR inform us before we rush to snap decisions. And I know the commission is concerned because we have, you know, obviously new members on the council, we have new members on the commission as well. So I think the purpose of today is to bring the new Planning Commission and the new city council together and to inform each other, because a lot is going to happen in a very short time, and we need to be prepared for it and talking with each other and be, you know, really open and honest, and that's what the public deserves. So I hope we can get there. I would love to get into details, but given the time constraints, I won't go there, and I know my colleagues on the Subcommittee want to speak. I think Commissioner Lodge would like to come up, and then I know John Justice would like to be the cleanup hitter at the end. He's been on the Subcommittee the longest, so I'll give him that spot. But we look forward to working with you, and we're certainly open to dialogue. And we've all submitted letters that hopefully you've had a chance to read that maybe go into more detail. I think there's some interesting concepts there, and one that I would like to hit on just briefly because it's not really on the screen, and we haven't talked about it, but I've alluded to it in the many meetings that we've had, and I know Commissioner Jacobs hit on it in her letter as well. Because of the jobs-housing imbalance and the question that Councilmember Williams brought up about why is commercial getting the same priority as residential when we know that that really isn't the case, I think we need a way to convert all the commercial, which has been controlled under Measure E, in a similar way for residential, whether you call it Measure R or whatever we call it, but to be able to convert maybe commercial to residential and use those same resources that are so precious to us and convert them from a commercial use to be able to use them for a residential use. So I hope maybe some of those type ideas that haven't really been rolled in yet can be part and parcel to what we talk about. But I think this is just the beginning, and it's very moldable, and we hope to get your input and see where this takes us. So thank you for the opportunity, and I'll let Sheila Lodge come up next.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. As has been said, a great deal of effort, time, and money has gone into Santa Barbara's general plan update, starting back in September of 2005. I agree with much of what Commissioner Bartlet has to say, but I believe the direction that's been taken is tempting far more than is needed. Santa Barbara is not broken, and it does not need fixing. The existing general plan does not need a complete rewrite. Correct, first slide, they're just, you're working on it, okay. I have a slide showing that the growth rate in all three South Coast cities, Galita, Carpinteria, and Santa Barbara. And by the way, I'm going to be much more specific than Chair Bartlet was with some recommendations. There we are. You can see from that chart, the Carpinteria has grown by 0.015 percent over the last 10 years. Galita, which wasn't incorporated until 2003, has actually declined in population by 0.1 percent. Santa Barbara has grown by 0.08 percent over the last 10 years, and it's fluctuated up and down for all three cities over that period of time. And all three cities are doing just fine, there aren't any problems, this very fine slide, aside from the issue of middle-income affordable housing. And I urge you to maintain that very slow growth rate. Sustainability and living within our resources are themes of the general plan update, the overarching themes, and the most sustainable thing the city can do is to continue on its very slow-growth path. That would put the least pressure on our resources, it will protect the things Santa Barbers love about their city, its small-town feel, its views, its sense of openness, and it will protect our largely tourism-based economy. Mr. Williams' question about, you know, why the emphasis on additional commercial development is a very important one. We don't need, if we encourage more commercial development, we are making our jobs-housing imbalance worse. Now, that seems contrary, but I do support the smallest increment of housing density units, however, I think smaller units at higher densities can be accommodated within our resources. I was pleased to hear staff discuss the motive and say, well, we already have it. That's what I've been saying all along, and I kept wondering, you know, why are we spending all this time on this? I don't think it's needed. Santa Barbara has developed, if you will, as a smart-growth city. It's at higher densities, they're near transportation, public transportation, and we've had mixed use since the very beginning. City is walkable, except for outer state street, parts of outer state street, and that was why that came into the process and time was taken for it, which has slowed the whole thing. The problem of affordable middle-income housing is a difficult one to solve, even it was pointed out as the major problem for the city in 1948. We've added 26,000 new units still in, and we seem to still have the same problem. We definitely don't need any more luxury units. I wouldn't ask the council to look at the concepts of affordable by design units as proposed by architects Tombele and Gilbury. The next slide, please. The next thing I am going to urge you to do specifically is to make a 45-foot height limit part of the general plan update, with exceptions for community priorities and to also amend the rebuilding ordinance. Adequate setbacks and open space requirements for livability in mixed-use projects are needed. If we go to 45 feet, we are still going to be 10 feet higher than anybody around us, and even 15 feet higher than Carpinteria, 20 feet higher than what Galita will permit in its old town. The county also has a 35-foot limit, and Santa Maria has 35 feet, except for parts of Main Street and Broadway. I think it's appropriate for Santa Barbara, it will help maintain the small-town feel and character of our city and help preserve our views. The ballot measure to lower building heights did not pass, but four of you did support it, and I'm confident with the provision for community priorities and change to regarding the ordinance regulating rebuilding that it would have. The next slide, please. This is Miami Beach, I happened to be there recently. It's what Santa Barbara might have looked like if we did not have the people of foresight we were so fortunate to have. Next slide, please. Santa Barbara has a setting that few other places in the world has. The city has developed with respect to that setting. It is a truly special place. I urge you to help keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Mr. Justice, I have 1 minute 18 seconds, I have a feeling you might need a little more time than that, so we'll let you have it.
Madam Mayor, I was going to share the way I could help the city bring between $100,000 and $1 million to the Plan Santa Barbara process, but I guess I've run out of time, so I can't do that today. But I will start by saying that we are not all of the same mind. I believe we have problems that need to be solved, and that this general plan update process is designed to take those head-on. When we started this process five years ago, we had a jobs-housing problem that was pretty significant. People had to commute from out of town, 45 minutes away, between 20,000 and 30,000 people. It contributed to the traffic problem. We had antiquated general plan and zoning ordinance, which is planning commissioners, we had difficulty using, and we had to make modifications all the time. The housing development that was being proposed was large, expensive, and didn't match our community needs. The city had become egocentric and wasn't dealing with regional problems. Sustainability was an afterthought, and the theoretical build-out then, as it is now, is between 6,500 and 7,500 new dwelling units, between $1 million and a half and $2 million square feet. I saw that as a call to action, and that's why I put in five years of my free time to try to make this plan work. Today, the jobs-housing issue is bad, the housing situation has tanked, as has the economy, and so we need to take the bull by the horns and get something done, and get something done now. Now, remember, this is not about more density, it's about moving density around. I don't think anybody in this city wants to see 6,500 new housing units and $1 million to $2 million square feet of non-residential, given the resources we have to work with. It just won't happen. So it's about making the general plan more efficient and working better. And time is the enemy, just that simple. It's taken us too long, but we can't change the past, we've got to focus on the future. In terms of going for the money, Senate Bill 732 passed in 2008 provides cities like Santa Barbara with between $100,000 and $1 million to apply towards general planning that is consistent with SB 375 and deals with housing, land use, transportation. And the city needs to go after that money, starting in March. The deadline is May, and we need to be on the train and have a very compelling argument, because that's going to be the bridge money we need to get this job done. Now, I've submitted to you a two-page letter that gets pretty specific. In some cases, it's critical of what's gone in the past, in some cases, it's challenging to you as leaders to do something, and do something now. So I think really what we have to do is prioritize what can be done this year and get it done. Secondly, we've got to use the draft EIR strategically, we've paid for it, we better make it count. The third thing is I think you need to establish an ad hoc Subcommittee of the council, just like you've got a finance committee and an ordinance committee, to deal with wrapping this puppy up and getting it done. And I think, just as a suggestion, I think with Mr. Francisco and Mr. White and Mayor Schneider, it would be a dream team of folks that the Plan Santa Barbara Subcommittee could work with, not only to get you as up to speed as you want to be on the stuff that we've been in the weeds with, but also help to craft some ideas about getting it done and getting it done good enough. Perfection is the enemy of progress at this point. We need to get ready for when the economy comes back, and this general plan is one way to do that. We don't want to throw disincentives in the way of recovery, we want to provide incentives and help people be smarter and more nimble about how to keep this city being the place it is. We need to agree on what's agreeable about the policy preferences report, we don't need to debate it, we need to discuss it. We put a lot of effort into this puppy. I, for one, lost a lot of sleep trying to do what I could to get this right, and even today, there are some disagreeable things in here. Now, I know several of you have run on a platform that disagrees with the vision, and I welcome that criticism, but I want to sit down and find out what works. We need to have a dialogue and change it so that it's comfortable for all of you, not just five of you, but all of you, because you all are the leaders of this city. I think we need to change the conversation from me to we, that's what I have tried to do in my process, I have been prodding along, I have been critical, I have been congratulatory when it works and when it says something, but now is the time to act. And we really need to think ahead, not just think back. And one of the former city attorneys of this great city said, "Conduct yourself accordingly." And I think that's what you have to do, because as Yogi Berra said, "The future ain't what it used to be." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Justice. I also want to acknowledge Planning Commissioners Larson, Jordan, and Schwartz, who are here, and I don't see Commissioner Jacobs, but I know she'll be watching at some point. Any questions for the Subcommittee from the council before we move on to public comment? I think we had a good, broad view of what the past couple of years have been by the three of you, so I appreciate the three of you in particular coming forward, so should just move on to public comment? Okay, then, we can do that. Okay, I have a number, any other slips? If you want to submit a slip, now is the time to do so. Before I cut it off, we're going to start with Judy Arias and Kathy McHammon, who is here, is offered to give her time to Judy, is that correct? So I'm gonna, other way around, give my time to Kathy McHammon from, okay, so Judy's here, so there she is, great. So I'm gonna put it back down to two minutes. Did you submit a slip? Jean?
There is a slip for her.
There is a slip, okay. We can do that. So I'm going to give you, so it's you, Judy, and Jean, so that's up to six minutes.
Okay, hopefully I won't need that long. Okay, I'm here as president of Allied Neighborhoods Association, and I believe all of you have seen our letter that was in your packet, so I'm only going to address some of our main points that are in that. But we do have some questions first. Will the housing, when will the housing element be available? When do we get to see a draft document? Also, when will the draft EIR in document form be available? We're told there'll be an open house, but, you know, we don't want tea and cookies, we want a document. Also, the staff report for this meeting sort of seemed inadequate, it was more like just an agenda, and several of the slides have been presented, would have been very helpful to see an And several of the slides have been presented would have been very helpful to see in advance. As you know, members of Allied Neighborhoods Association have attended and given input at almost all the meetings since 2005. We have also been discussing this whole Plan Santa Barbara, the policy preference documents with some of our member associations, and we don't think there is a consensus to support many of the proposed general plan revisions that are contained in the policy preferences of Plan Santa Barbara. We think that... Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot one thing that was not in our letter that has been left out, and that is really our concern with the policy drivers, specifically, why was keeping the small-town character of Santa Barbara left out? We believe that the most important goal is to maintain Santa Barbara's unique qualities that have set us apart from other coastal cities. Santa Barbara needs to maintain its quality of life, as embodied in its charm, small-town character, diversity, and historic resources. This needs to be maintained not only for current residents, but for future generations. People have said over and over again they desire to maintain these very special qualities about Santa Barbara, and they're also basic to our financial viability. Many items that are proposed in the plan appear to be excessive and do not reflect what were the major concerns of the initial public workshops. It can almost be characterized as an exercise in excess. Given the current economic situation, it would appear that we really need to focus on what is really needed and what is workable. We should not be venturing into speculative ideas that are very expensive and may or may not work. We need to preserve the best and leave the rest. We need to be more prudent to build a consensus like we had before on the general plan. That was consensus-based, and we need to improve on that, not go in a totally different direction. Like Commissioner Lodge said, we don't need to totally rewrite the general plan. One of the concerns we have had is that public scrutiny of the validity of the underlying assumptions of what many of the proposed strategies and how they would work under Santa Barbara conditions has been missing. So at this stage, let's forget about some of these theoretical possibilities and work instead on Santa Barbara solutions to Santa Barbara problems. Living within our resources is very important to Allied. We believe that if Santa Barbara is to be sustainable, the best way to do this is to live within our resources, is to continue the slow-growth policies we already have. That does not mean we need to totally freeze everything, but only make those improvements which we know are really needed. We've been very concerned that in many of the proposals, staff has not exactly been concerned with living within our resources. In your letter, I gave an example of the talking about the need for increased density in order to reduce the congestion due to workers commuting to our city. We don't even know how many people are commuting. We have no idea how much housing the city was talking about. We don't have information on the effect of these new... of the commutes. Will building new units help the situation or not? Will just new commuters come in? We have no idea how all of this will be paid for. What will be the impacts? We don't have the information on the resources we need to make these decisions. We urge you to take the following actions. Eliminate the concept of MOTA, since it is not needed. I mean, I was glad to hear that we're already there. We don't really need this. You can already...
20 seconds.
...build along transit corridors and provide alternative transportation. The other thing is eliminate any increase in density that is greater than that provided in our existing general plan and zoning ordinances. We need to keep variable density in multifamily zones, and we support smaller units...
On six minutes, Kathy.
...but we want the density in the units per acre to be the same as it exists. We are also going to ask you to reexamine growth adaptive management. We don't have the...
Wrap it up, please.
...resources to do this. We think it is expensive, and it is very speculative. You'll see in our letter what we have said about it. So we need for council to act on these issues and give clear instructions to staff before more time and resources are wasted. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have your letter, so we can look at that in more detail. I have Paul Hernandy, followed by Mary Louise Days. We're back to two minutes per person.
Good morning, Mayor Schneider and council members. I'm Paul Hernandy, speaking on behalf of the General Plan Update Committee of the Citizens Planning Association, which has a newly updated website, which provides a lot of background documentation for the recommendations three of us today will make. Also, keep in mind that we submitted a letter, which will be summarized now. In brief, we believe that there is citywide agreement about at least three goals of Plan Santa Barbara. First, living within our resources. Second, lessening our city's jobs-housing imbalance. And third, preserving Santa Barbara's much-admired mountain views, cultural diversity, and established character. We urge you to consider the following actions as the most effective means of achieving the agreed-upon goals. First, take the project description in the proposed EIR seriously enough to declare that Plan Santa Barbara will add no more than about 3,000 dwelling units over the next 30 years. Second, acknowledge that current zoning laws permit the addition of many more than 3,000 residential units, and that therefore there is no need for increasing the maximum allowed density beyond what is provided in our existing general plan and zoning ordinances. Third, promote jobs-housing balance by reducing the Plan Santa Barbara projects 2 million square feet of new residential space to 1,000 square feet... I'm sorry. 1 million square feet, according to the figures included in both Alternative 1 and Alternative 2. And my two colleagues from Citizens Planning Associations will give you summaries of our additional seven recommendations, maybe only five. Who knows? Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Louise Days will be followed by Naomi Kovacs.
I'm Mary Louise Days, Chair of the CPA's General Plan Update Committee. Our fourth recommendation is to replace the MOTA concept with a dual-density system throughout all commercial and multifamily zones to encourage employers and nonprofit organizations to develop 100% affordable residential units, according to currently existing density policies, but limit job-generating market-rate residential development to 12 units per acre. Number five, change the variable-density ordinance from being based on the number of bedrooms to being based on rigorously limited unit sizes, while keeping the average number of total units per acre roughly the same as it is now. Focus the adaptive management program on planning objectives that can be enforceably monitored on an annual basis. Seven, add to Plan Santa Barbara's health-related policies promoting walkability, a set of health-related policies promoting the dissipation of traffic-generated air pollution by means of generously landscaped building setbacks and other open spaces. Revised the latest version of the proposed land-use map so that it more fully reflects our city's heritage, historic, and architectural resources and unique character. That also applies to the unseen-yet land-use element. This would include map images of the properties within El Presidio de Santa Barbara State Historic Park downtown, which is a very sizable part of downtown. We are pleased that a separate element of the general plan devoted to historic preservation will now be prepared. We have struggled and recommended that for a few years now, and we're supported by other persons and organizations. Thank you. We will now hear from our executive director.
Thank you. Yes, we will. Naomi Kovacs, followed by Bill Marks.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Naomi Kovacs, Executive Director of Citizens Planning Association. I'm speaking today on behalf of our South County Land Use Committee, which wanted to add a few comments not covered in the General Plan Update Committee's comments. First, though, I just want to ask why John Ledbetter's report today was not provided to the public in advance, and I wonder if it was provided to the council or if this was the first time you saw it.
First time we saw it, this morning.
Would have been helpful, actually, to have that in advance to help us prepare our comments. But turning back to our Land Use Committee's comments. First, our committee wants to echo the recommendations submitted back in December by our General Plan Update Committee, excuse me, that neighborhood voices should be solicited and listened to more comprehensively throughout this process, and we submit that it may actually not be too late for a citizens committee to still be formed. Second, we're becoming concerned about the long-term extension of the voter-approved Measure E and how numerous delays in this Plan Santa Barbara process might actually negatively impact the continuity of Measure E's citywide protections. As you'll recall, Measure E was designed to protect Santa Barbara's quality of life by limiting the adverse impacts of traffic congestion, housing, water supplies, and such, from non-residential development patterns that might exceed the city's reliable resources and infrastructure base. This was actually just one of many items that were supposed to be folded into Plan Santa Barbara, but with the current time lag and the issue of getting five votes to adopt Plan Santa Barbara, how is the city planning to deal with the current temporary ordinance that's in place of Measure E right now? Does the city intend to take action to protect and extend Measure E, even if it means pulling it out of Plan Santa Barbara and the temporary ordinance? Or does the city envision a need for the community to start gathering signatures to initiate a drive to achieve a voter-approved reauthorization of Measure E? We really hope that's not the case. We'd rather it be folded into Plan Santa Barbara process and find a viable solution to preserving the existing protections that Measure E has offered us. So actually CPA does stand ready to help in that process. And we appreciate this work session today. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Marks will be followed by Steve Moss. And I see staff writing down questions, so we'll go back to that after public comment.
Madam Mayor, council members, I am Bill Marks, and I'm speaking for myself. Having read the economic and demographic conditions analysis prepared for the city by Strategic Economics as part of Plan Santa Barbara, I have asked myself, what sort of policies and planning decisions does their data support? Pardon my wonkishness. The analysis forecasts that Santa Barbara will, in the next 20 years, need to grow by 4,388 housing units for an added number of 5,217 jobs. UCSB's economic forecast project predicts that the majority of these jobs will be for incomes of $30,000 to $40,000, and that growth will depend mainly on the expansion of UCSB and Cottage Hospital. But UCSB is entirely not in Santa Barbara, and Cottage is partly not in Santa Barbara. For planning purposes, at least, Goleta seems to have vanished behind the asterisk at the bottom of Page 4, which some of us have looked at. Private-sector jobs will be dominated by food, service, and retail jobs earning $30,000 to $40,000. Future demand will come mainly from, quote, "non-family, smaller households." In short, from the unmarried, working poor. Some prospect. It might appear that the drivers behind this analysis, with its limited and limiting focus on a jobs-housing imbalance, are the low-income hiring requirements of Cottage and UCSB. Turning to the commute data, the commute data indicates only about 14% of commuters come from further than Goleta, where, incidentally, one notices the Design Review Board has just approved 274 new apartments and five condos. Hopefully, some of UCSB's desperate house hunters, whose average target price is $411,000, will find these apartments affordable as well as closer to work than they would be if located in Santa Barbara.
Could you wrap up, please?
As one measure of the affluence of the fortunate few, in 2008, Santa Barbara had 2,617 vacant units, mostly second homes and units bought on spec. So I'll conclude by saying that the general picture here is of a community characterized by an ever-widening gap between rich and poor and a disappearance of the professional middle class, who somehow need to be brought back here out of exile. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Moss will be followed by Connie Hanna.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Steve Moss, representing the Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District. MTD continues to support the goal of Plan Santa Barbara to focus future growth near transit corridors. This will have to encourage the use of transit and also reduce fuel consumption and greenhouse gas production. Also, the goal of providing a complete network of pedestrian and bicycle facilities will enhance the attractiveness of bus service as an alternative for those who do have mobility options, which is a good thing as well. As your regional transit provider, MTD wants to stay involved in this process, and we're here to help in any way that we can. And we... Because transportation and traffic is a key to the quality of life, we urge you not to lose sight of the importance of integrating transportation planning into this process for this 20-year plan that's underway. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Hanna and Debra Slate's giving you her time, so I'll give you four minutes. After that will be Gil Berry.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Connie Hanna, speaking for the Santa Barbara League of Women Voters. League members have been participating in the tours, workshops, and hearings on this general plan update since 2005. We have become increasingly concerned about the direction it has been taking. After years of careful control of planning and slow growth, the present Plan Santa Barbara threatens to encourage more density and faster population growth. One of the League's longest-standing positions calls for the South Coast to live within our resources. Santa Barbara City Charter, Section 1507, requires that the city do so. We disagree with people who say that achieving sustainability requires some sort of evolution from that requirement. Living within our resources means today exactly what it meant when it was put into the charter. We live on a narrow plain between the ocean and the mountains. Our location has been our destiny. We are a charming, small town surrounded by natural beauty. Both our residents and visitors from around the world want us to remain that way. The League believes that the new concept of mobility-oriented development areas should be removed from the plan, and with it, any provision for increased densities in any areas. The city will be fortunate if it can manage the presently-allowed amount of growth, and you will probably want to reconsider some existing policies that allowed massive buildings like Chapala 1 to be built. In addition, you will need to be monitoring existing resources almost constantly, not every five years, in order to be ready to change policies if we reach our water limit. It's the League's impression that while the whole panoply of smart-growth principles works in some other communities, parts of it are very unsuited for Santa Barbara because of our conditions of build-out and long-term unaffordability. We have always supported additional funding for bus services and all efforts to improve walkability. The League has been studying sustainability seriously for the past 10 years, but we think the city will still need to require adequate parking for projects, residences, and businesses. There is probably neither the money nor the space for other major alternative transportations to expand. We've been saying that some major changes need to be made to Plan Santa Barbara before it's accepted by the city. We hope that City Council will consider the density and transportation... We hope that City Council will consider the density and transportation issues that much of the public has been questioning for these past five years.
Thank you. Gil Berry will be followed by Lee Muldaver.
My name is Gil Berry. Based on the people that I've talked to, there appears to be no consensus in the community for staff's proposed general plan. The majority of the population don't want a modA, and the majority of the population don't want to increase density anywhere. I urge you to take a straw vote today to instruct staff to remove the modA and to remove any increase in density anywhere. It'd be ridiculous to spend another $1 million over the next year if there are not going to be five votes to ever get a modA or increase density, so you might as well put it to bed The consensus in the community is to continue our slow growth, preserve our small-town character, and the amount of growth that we want and need can be accommodated by our existing density. So there's no need to increase density anywhere. Increasing density is population growth-inducing. Our density is our only growth control in the general plan. Increasing density will open Santa Barbara to overdevelopment. Our existing density allows massive projects like those on Chapala, so why would we want to increase density, which would allow even bigger projects? Our existing density allows affordable housing projects with small units and high densities like those that were built on Chapala. We don't need to increase density. So I urge you, please, today, take a straw vote. Show staff that there's never going to be five votes to get a modA or increase density, and instruct staff to remove the modA right now and to not increase density. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Muldaver, and the last speaker will be Mickey Flex.
Lee's not here. So the last speaker will be Mickey Flex.
Mickey with the last word, okay? Yeah, she planned that, right? Just teasing.
I did not plan it that way. I went to the wrong place. So I was late. Though the last word should be sustainability, which was, in fact, the guiding principle of Plan Santa Barbara, and I believe should continue to be. State law SB 375 demands no less, and I think that the true consensus in our community is one for sustainability and demands no less. When we talk about growth or no growth, are we talking about population in the daytime or in the nighttime? There is a vast difference, and population in the daytime represents more than the figures that Sheila presented. Population in the nighttime, I believe, with the next census, will show a significant decrease because of the lack of affordable housing in this community. Fewer people can afford to live here. More houses are second homes and remain empty. The job today, I believe, is to remind each part of this process, the Planning Commission, the staff, and the City Council, that you each have a job to do. They are not the same. The staff has and should continue to present alternatives and possibilities based on its discussions with the community. The Planning Commission should continue to study them and present them, and the City Council, finally, after an EIR and much community discussion on that, will have to make a decision. Let's not make premature decisions by one body to control the work of somebody else. The staff should continue to do what it believes is right and not stick its finger in the wind so many times to try to figure out from which direction the wind is coming. Finally, I would urge you, or almost finally, I would urge you to not judge or not heed those who would judge what the consensus of the community is from those who have, in the past, supported the height limit and thought that that was the consensus of the community. The community spoke fairly clearly, I believe, on not having a height limit at this point, and I don't think that that should confuse the issue at the moment.
Can you wrap up, please?
At the same time, now this is the last, I would like to welcome Sheila Lodge's support, both of mixed-use housing and of the idea of smaller units in high-density housing. That's an important step towards sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that closes public comment. I believe there were some questions. I don't know if staff wanted... The one in particular was about Measure E. I think you maybe clarify what happens with Measure E. There was a question about that, and I don't know if there's any other comments staff would like to make.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, maybe I'll try to answer Measure E, and then Mr. Ledbetter will just answer about when the documents are going to be available. Measure E was a 20-year growth-control measure that was adopted by the voters in 1989, and it set a limit of 3 million square feet of non-residential development over that 20-year period. And so the charter amendment technically stopped being in effect at the end of last year. But prior to that, we brought to the council an ordinance which continued that existing growth-control mechanism for up to an additional four years, I believe. Or was it three years? Three years. To give us time to wrap up the Plan Santa Barbara process. So basically, we took a 20-year growth measure, and we extended it to 23 years. And so that's been adopted, that's in place, that's how we continue to process applications is under that continuing growth-control measure. It's in place for three more years by ordinance. It is a central tenet of Plan Santa Barbara. It always has been, and so we hope that by the end of this year, we come up with what is our next increment of commercial growth for the next 20 years. And at that point, council can decide whether to codify it in ordinance form or whether it requires another charter amendment to implement it for the following 20 years. That's up to the City Council to decide as well. And then I'll let Mr. Ledbetter answer about when the documents are going to be available.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, and members of the community, we were holding off announcing what date the documents would be released. We just wanted to make sure that we could deliver on time. We did... We were intending originally to release them this month, but we now have a date set for March 18th. Thursday is going to be our open-house date, and it'll have an open house from, I believe, somewhere like 10 to 6:00, at which time we'll have a lot of information available about the different documents, as well as the EIR. We can... We'll have... That'll be staffed, and we can answer questions about specific... Get down even to the parcel level on some cases. And we'll be handing out DVDs of all the policy documents, as well as the EIR, on that date, and that'll kick off the 60-day review period, as I was referring to earlier.
Do you have a location?
And that'll be at the Faulkner Gallery.
Faulkner Gallery.
Yeah.
March 18th, 10 to 6:00.
And clarify, it's a drop-in type situation. It's not that we're expecting people to show up from 10:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. and be there all day. But it's a drop-in, and we'll have staff throughout the entire day, so come at your convenience, and we'll have staff available to answer questions and walk you through what we're presenting to you.
And of course, everything will be available on the web. People will be able to access, download all the documents on the web, and we will have a limited number of written documents, but those, we're going to be very judicious about, given the cost and the budget constraints that we're under these days. So just warning the community now that that is a constraint.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to bring it back to council, and again, the purpose of today was to get a briefing. Certainly, your comments are welcome, and I just have in mind that the draft EIR is coming out next month, so I think a lot of the questions that have been asked about policy decision... I mean, for me personally, I'm going to be looking at that draft EIR in detail to figure out where do we go from here, but that's how I'm going to start looking at this. Why don't we start with Mr. Williams and then Mr. White?
Well, I just want to, first of all, say that there is elements of this plan that I do consider visionary and important and should be defended. But more importantly, it's compliant with state law. You know, the... Some of the elements that some members of this council may find strange to be in here are elements that are necessary now with Senate Bill 375 and that jurisdictions that have chosen to ignore have been sued by the Attorney General. So I believe that that should be one of our guiding principles, is to be compliant with state law in terms of greenhouse gas reductions. It's not an option. It's not, you know, something that's an extra. It's not something that is up to us anymore. It is a mandate from the state, and I think it's one of the few cases of a good one. I also want to... You know, some of the comments were strange to me in that the Plan Santa Barbara preferred scenario, and could you put that up there, the land-use assumptions slide? I want to remind folks that, look at the no-project alternative and look at the Plan Santa Barbara preferred alternative. The preferred is a decrease in growth, and I would maybe argue that it's not enough of a decrease in commercial growth, but it is, you know, essentially status quo on housing and a decrease in commercial growth. The... I agree with Bill Marks that one of our things that we need to articulate more is how that middle-income folks in Santa Barbara are going to be able to survive in the coming years. But I would argue that they're not going to be able to unless we have some kind of trade-offs, and I suggest the largest trade-off is less commercial for more affordable housing, and specifically, middle-income affordable housing. And I think the most important ingredient of that is the modA. I think that, though that has been the sort of principle or direction that some of our planning has already gone and some of our land-uses have already gone, that there are elements in this plan that help that be more substantial and that there are... I, you know, welcome people to look at the modA in terms of some of the policies that back it up, because those are very, very important. And I think it's one of the few things that might be able to help the middle class in this community survive. And the... And I think if people look at some, a couple of the, you know, 13 to 15 modAs and say, "Well, this sector is not appropriate for this," that's fine. There might be some parts of the circles that would not be appropriate for the land-use mechanisms that have been articulated in the plan, but that doesn't mean throw out the whole idea. It means, you know, remove one or half one and do a, you know, a half circle or do a smaller circle. Don't get rid of the good just because there's a small portion of a couple of the modAs that can't handle the density. I don't think there's five votes for anything on this, okay? And so the... I don't think any of the... I don't think there's five votes to move any direction. And so what I think that means that we should be doing is not try to operate on consensus. I think that's crazy. I, you know, I went to school at UC Berkeley, and one of the reasons why I didn't participate in... Why I chose Campus Democrats instead of activist organizations there is because they operated on consensus, which means they had meetings that lasted for hours and hours and hours because one person could stop the rest of the body from moving. That's not democracy. It's not. Operating by consensus is not democracy. I would say that we don't... We shouldn't operate by consensus. We should operate by negotiation, and that there is going to have to be, to move forward, there is going to have to be some growth-reducing elements to our plan and some mechanisms that incentivize affordable and middle-income housing. And then unless we balance those two, there's not going to be five votes for anything. So I would just argue that we should be operating by negotiation, not by consensus. Consensus is going to bring us nowhere. Oh, and I think the most important thing to make that happen is actually to keep to this timeline, and I think it's ambitious, but I think it's important.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, obviously, I've had a lot of involvement in Plan Santa Barbara to date, and so I bring the... Some of the frustrations and some of the pride of the effort forward from the five years that have gone into this project so far. And clearly, we are facing an interesting watershed today, as we have a council with a different philosophical makeup than has been the case in the past, and I'm looking forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say, because it's definitely... We need to listen and to take a fork, this fork in the road, as again, there's a barra in there, ism in there as well, of, you know, take it. But... And also, I want to say that while we have some gridlock going on here, we have some of the best-informed, passionate gridlock that anybody has ever seen. This has been a wonderful group of... This is a wonderful group of people who obviously care about Santa Barbara more than anything. And so I'm proud to be part of this frustration and creativity that's going on. In light of this fork, I'm going to try and make a few comments that I think are exclamation marks in my history with this, but not go into the full detail at this point. Perhaps at another meeting, there will be another time, I think, when fleshing out the full... My full story that I'd like to share will be the time, but I'd like to at least give a few of the highlights now. First of all, our status quo. Our status quo has created Chapala 1. It's created mansionized condominiums, and I have worked with... I've been very frustrated the last decade to see this evolution go on, which has created this situation. I mentioned to Mr. Hotchkiss that I recall saying, I think our ultimate cartoon was, I think there's some studios that got up in sort of the 2,000-square-foot range, which is two and a half times the size of the average three-bedroom house on the mesa. And that was sort of the pushing to the limits of the inappropriateness of our bedroom-to-acre density. That's what we have as our metric for building. And so that is broken. That's a part of... Whereas I agree with Ms. Lodge that the city and the body as a whole isn't really broken. If you look at that piece, that's a... There's a malady going on within its insides, which is broken. So that's a broken piece. Oversized units, we're not getting... Out of the development that's occurring, we're not getting what we need. I'll move to a couple of projects that have been approved where I could see more density. So the density issue has been... Is one of the hot buttons, obviously, out there. San Manian and a project on Milpus and De La Guerra Streets, two projects, both of which have been approved relatively recently as to mass, bulk, and scale, and I think it's gotten a fairly good consensus, at least at Planning Commission level. Both of those projects, I believe, could have more density within the same skin. It could be no bigger, not one inch bigger in size, but could have more units in them and could be serving Santa Barbara better. Market rate, I mean, I'm not talking about... I'm trying to stay away from... The inclusionary issue is another one to go into, but just market rate, smaller units. So I am... I support the notion of this fluidity of density. I think, as a whole, our development potential is excessive. I think we have the potential to develop more units on the books. That's why I was sort of cross-examining John a little bit about our history on this commercial corridor, but... So I don't think we have the resources to develop that full 6,500 units or 7,500 or whatever, if you really, you know, pull the sheets back on that. So... But I'd like to see what units that do occur be smaller and perhaps have the opportunity in strategic locations like San Manian and like that spot on Milpus and De La Guerra, where I think there could have been more density, to have the opportunity to provide smaller units that are more affordable by design, a term that was brought up. So scarce resources, smaller units, higher density in strategic locations, perhaps a lower overall development potential. So those are pieces of Plan Santa Barbara that I see as useful going forward. The Upper State Street Study was the one example over the last five years that was... It brought forward all of the tensions and push-me-pull-yous about... was, it brought forward all of the tensions and push me, pull you's about getting the plan on the ground, getting out there and saying, what's, what do we do on this block? What should it feel like? What should it look like? While we did a neighborhood outreach, and Ms. Lodge and I had a wonderful discussion about this, that neighborhood outreach didn't go to Milpus Street and ask Milpus sites, Milpusetans, what do you want on Milpus? They said, what do you want in the city? And of course, everybody, and they says, well, we want the city to have more affordable units, and yet we don't want to change the feel. But not, what do we want on Milpus Street? What do we want? Now, we've had the Mesa folks step up and go, you didn't ask us, but here's what we want for the Mesa. So that's the model, getting neighborhoods to, to express themselves on their particular needs. I think we missed, we didn't ask that question quite right going forward. As I say, I've got many more comments to make, but I, that I think encapsulizes where I see a brokenness in the system that I would like to see some change occur and that we not just do status. Status quo is not sustainable, I don't think, at this point. We end up with still the more potential for mansionized condos, too much development and unaffordability. And I look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it appropriate now to take Gil Berry's suggestion and see, and have a straw vote? Can I make a motion for that?
That we, this isn't, it's not agendized for any action items, but what I would suggest is you make your comments. We haven't heard from everyone yet and you can throw that out as an idea.
Okay. Well, I'm throwing that out as an idea. Because I, I agree about the mod A that Gil said and I am worried about increasing population in Santa Barbara, as I think all of you are, and that means increased density. So it seems to me that the three criteria that, that brought us, all of us to the city that we enjoy so much are aesthetics, economics and water. And those should be the three criteria upon which we plan for the future. Thank you.
Ms. Self.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got lots of notes around here. Hopefully I'll make sense at the end of it. But I'd like for anyone here to tell me whenever Santa Barbara was considered affordable. It's because we're special and things that are more special usually cost more. And I'm very concerned about governmental interference and trying to socially engineer something that has never been and putting us on this path. I guess I would feel a little more comfortable if in the studying of what is viable for Santa Barbara, if they had not only used smart growth consultants to advise them. There is another opinion and another side that got no airing. And I think that is what our CPA and the people who have spoken here today are representing that other side. This is our community. This is our home. This is something that we hold very dear. And when you talk about affordability, we've added an 11% fee to anybody trying to build anything. Does that make it more affordable? Right now, I just got information from the Santa Barbara Housing, Rental Housing Association. We have a ever growing vacancy rate in this city. It's about 6% now in rental housing in most of the areas. And so we obviously have housing available. And for us to know, say somebody's living in Ventura, one of the family members works in Ventura, one of them drives here, how are we ever going to reconcile and control how we live our lives and where we work and, and go? It's, it seems really something we won't be able to accomplish. Hearing that there was a planning consensus. Well, there was a planning consensus that brought us the Chapala Street, that brought us so much community and happiness. It's because you're in this, I want to say constituency that supports a certain thing and you're hearing all supporting thing, and then it gets out to the public and everybody is pulling their hair out and putting initiatives on the ballot to try to stop such a thing from happening again. So feeling that you're in your comfort zone and getting a consensus isn't necessarily correct because the people out there who aren't involved, because they're working, they're trying to maintain their lives here, they don't, haven't dedicated themselves to being involved in the city politics, but they do react when they see it. And another thing about affordability, I came here 25 years ago and was absolutely shocked at all the fees and taxes on everything we do to such an extent. That makes it less affordable. We're now facing, we're, water shortages statewide, being told that we have to decrease our water consumption. And then we talk about doing something like this. Is that really, I think, a high priority unsustainability for this community is to be so reckless with our resources? So I hope that made sense. But thank you for coming and I really appreciate all your hours you've put into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco and then Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this has been going on a long time and I am not going to go over all of the objections that I've had in the past and that I've made quite clear to where this whole thing started from in the policy preferences document. I think the policy preferences document tries to accomplish too many things that too much of it is speculative and utopian. And what I think City Council should ultimately produce out of all this effort from all these people with all these different points of view is a document that is prudent, circumspect and flexible. And I agree with Mr. Williams that that is going to have to come through a process of negotiation because I know that there are very different points of view on this council about where this process should end up. I also agree with Councilman White's observation about the importance of individual neighborhoods in Santa Barbara to this whole, to this whole plan. I think too often, and this is not directed at any particular people, but I think too often in the planning profession in general, planners look at cities as abstractions. And the map can tend to overwhelm the reality. I believe what we have to do, and what Santa Barbara has been very good at over decades, is starting with what's actually on the ground, starting with our actual neighborhoods, starting with the actual people who live here now and not some idealized future, but starting with what we have, seeing what's good about it and figuring out how best to make that continue in the future. I think my goals for this general plan update are more modest than many peoples. Obviously, this is something that we have to finish. We have to finish with significant financial constraints and it's too late to rewrite the policy preferences document. It's too late to redesign the EIR. But from my point of view, I think there may be significant pieces of what has been done that are for our current purposes of finishing what the state requires of us. Some of those things are superfluous and some of those are going to have to be dropped. We will do the essential work that we need to do and I don't think it's going to be easy for us as a city council or for the Planning Commission for that matter, to reach an agreement on the final form of that, but we have to do it and we have to do it this year. And I'm absolutely willing to work with everybody, including everyone in the community, to come up with the best solution that we can. Personally, though, I feel that is going to be a minimalist solution and that's what I'm aiming for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. House.
I agree with the comments. We need to keep forging ahead on this and get this done as, in a really time conscious way. I also like the concept of standing in a neighborhood and looking around and actually seeing what it is, it's great about it and where it needs to maybe change, but having, really empowering neighbors and to do that. And in some cases, as the Mesa is a perfect case of just getting out of the way. I mean, there's a neighborhood that's just taking that on and it's just really remarkable to see that. And the resources they've brought to it, it's not city resources, it's just local talent and people who are really eager and interested in seeing a really good future. And Coast Village Road is another area where they've, the businesses over there really rallied and got their neighbors together and have submitted basically a kind of vision for that part of Santa Barbara, which is something that they on their very own generated and have contributed to Plan Santa Barbara. And I think that whatever we can do to keep encouraging that, design that, that's the flexibility I'm looking for, is to design that into our 20-year future. Part of the problem with our current zoning ordinance, the way that we have it and what we run into problems, this whole issue of modifications and things that Staffing Area Officer and, and Planning Commission, ABR HLC, has to do with the inflexibility of our current system. And so when you know what you really is appropriate and what would work and it conflicts with a fairly rigid tool, you really have problems there. And I think that to sort of the degree to which we can design appropriate flexibility that retains the character, say, of a particular neighborhood or business area, that'll be really important in this. But I, I will take issue. I cannot imagine that anybody could say that Santa Barbara has, I mean, in good conscience is reckless with resources. There's just no way. And to be visionary or to be looking out to the future and trying to imagine how wonderful our community can be, that's not being speculative. That's being really, you know, having a conscience about how the future should be and, and, and being fully engaged. And we want to encourage people to be thinking like that because innovation is going to be very important to this if it's to be successful. So I just want to say that the, the presentation, always starting with the core principles in your presentation is really a critical part of what you've been doing. Please continue to do that because those are the places where I think there's tremendous agreement. This whole idea of living within your resources, some call it sustainability, others will call it resource efficiency, or there'll be different ways of talking, green or something. But these basic core concepts, to me, are foundational. They are a part of a continuity that goes back many, many years in Santa Barbara's legacy, looking to the future, which is what we're living out right now. We need to keep that going and continue to re-articulate those things. So reaffirming our goals is, in these terms, is really important. I appreciate, Mr. Ledbetter, you talking about old urbanism here. Santa Barbara is very much what many other communities around the nation are trying to emulate. We have something very good here and it's grown organically over time. It was originally laid out in a pattern that, that makes it so you can accommodate goals that are, that meet the needs of individuals, neighbors and businesses and, and it's, it's eminently sustainable by its design. We have something very good to work with. We don't need to reinvent all of that, thank goodness. I'm a little sad that the word mod A has taken on some sort of a connotation that for some is negative. I mean, the idea that you would design your future development in terms of where you might locate it near where transportation is convenient and that you would relieve neighborhoods from the burden of accepting densities that are inappropriate and actually can put, you know, the, the develop, new development where it can be served best by the infrastructure. I mean, that's a natural concept and it's sort of the way we've been designing our whole transportation thing anyway, for a long, long time. I do know that when you put a line on a map and it goes right through a single family neighborhood and you call it a mobility oriented design area, people could be threatened by that. And we saw that at Planning Commission where people kind of came out and were really worried about what that meant. So I think we need to be very careful with how we present that concept. But I don't think that it's the wrong concept. I think the idea of, of deciding where you're going to be trying to locate or nudge, if you will, through your zoning or whatever, future development and do it in a really efficient way that preserves and protects the existing neighborhoods is a fundamental concept. I'm very happy to see the historic element continually to be strengthened and emphasized. I think that we should, we're in a down economy right now, but when we look forward, we're not going to be there. We're not going to be down. Everything's kind of calm right now. I mean, traffic is not crazy. I mean, it's, it's, but just imagine when the economy comes back. We need to be really planning ahead and that's what this is about. We're looking over 20 years in it. We're probably, because it takes a long time, it could be 30 years before there's another one of these things done, in reality. So we, we're planning for the, for future recoveries and I think we should keep that in mind. Couple more things here. Many in our community are underserved. I disagree strongly with the idea that we don't have problems now here in our community. We don't have problems even with our current general plan. We have families doubling and tripling up in single family neighborhoods and that's an absolutely, that, there's no excuse, that, that, to me, is the kind of lack of planning. That's, that's, that's sort of the, we, we need to really be managing for a future that doesn't allow that to occur. We have people who are traveling, being forced out of Santa Barbara and having to commute long distances. That has impacts on our neighbors. Any of us that go and travel and, and visit other communities that are impacted by Santa Barbara's lack of housing for the workforce here, we are told over and over again about their difficulties in accommodating what we should be picking up in terms of responsibility on our end. So this idea, this last one of these core principles, or no, where is it? The one in here, oh, number five, advanced regional thinking, collaboration and solutions. We really can't be so selfish as to think that we can just displace the impacts in Santa Barbara and think there's no impacts. When we do an environmental impact report, one of the things I'll be looking for is that the impact report considers the impacts of our actions here on our surrounding, on surrounding communities and our neighbors. And I do think that our economic component has to be a key core part of this. Our local businesses, our employers, it's not like just give a green light and, and, you know, grease the skids for overdevelopment or something. No, no, no. What we can do to encourage them to participate in this process as partners, they can help us come to solutions that are character, are Santa Barbara in character and which really meet the economic future needs of our community. So when we talk about Measure E, extending that, what's been remarkable about it has been the business community and the development community have found a way to fit their, their plans and their economic futures into that box and work cooperatively with the city. We want to keep that cooperative relationship as we move forward. So I hope we do continue with Measure E and that we do it in a way that is thoughtful for the economic future of the city. Very last point, and I'm taking a long time, but it's kind of important here. One of the comments you'd made, Mr. Ledbetter, in your presentation, or somebody did, talked about addressing the demographic trends that we're seeing. And, and in talking about housing, if we plan on too little housing, this is my thought, if we plan on too little housing, what we get is substandard housing and overcrowding. In other words, when we plan forward, there's one way of thinking that if you build housing, they will come, that kind of concept, like you're going to overdevelop. The other one is you could look at what the demographic trends are over the last 30 or 40 years and notice that the actual increase or the moderate increase in, in population in our, in our area has been impervious to economic highs or lows or droughts or, or moratoria on water or whatever. The question is, when we're planning forward, are we planning for adequate housing for the demographic trends that we've seen historically over a long period of time? Are we meeting the needs of our constituents? And that bottom line to me is what this is about, is meeting the needs of our constituents here in Santa Barbara. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting me go along for, on that, but it's really important to me to do that.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you all for being here again. And I think I hear the word gridlock or stalemate or where we're going and we're stuck. And part of it, I really think, is that we're, we're ready for some documents. We're ready for some, you know, things that we can look at, that we can do some real analysis and then comment on where do we go from here, given the information that's presented to us. What we've heard for a long time, and it's been valuable conversation out there, is what our vision is, what our ideals are, what our philosophies are, and there have been different ones throughout the community. And that's been very vibrant and, and sometimes very heated, but healthy in, to some extent. I will say, you know, yes, Santa Barbara's a gorgeous, beautiful place. We all agree we want to keep it that way, but to say that it's just not broken, don't fix it, then I don't know what that whole debate was about last year. There are things that need to get tweaked or, or something needs There are things that need to get tweaked or, or something needs to change, and I think my colleagues mentioned a number of items, one way or another. And so I think we're really ripe to get the draft EIR and really delve into it. And I want to get back to what Commissioner, Commissioner Jostis said, is to get this thing done this year, this calendar year, and to use the draft EIR strategically, that focus on the areas where we do have common ground. And I think there are quite a few things in there. And then the ones where there's a lot of debate, have the debate, look at the facts, look at the impacts, one way or another, of deciding to go in one direction or another, and then negotiate and figure out where we're going to, how we're going to come up with an actual document that can pass and be consistent with state law. I mean, Measure E, I think, is a great example where everyone talks about Measure E as this wonderful, amazing thing that there's no way we'd get rid of. And yes, it passed with a majority vote when it went to the voters, but it didn't pass with 100%. I mean, there are people who voted no, once upon a time, on Measure E. And so there, those are the kind of things I think we're going to have to grapple with, and, and because we have such passionate views about this town, it's going to be a great conversation. I, I, what I don't want to see is us to go off on tangents because we really want to add on something else or bring in something else, because I want to, again, be focused on passing a general plan amendment and getting our housing element to the state in a timely manner, and, again, to use that strategically. The Mesa Architects and the, in the group on the Mesa, putting together their neighborhood vision, great example, and I agree with Mr. House, it happened because the city was not officially part of it. It came from the residents, and I, I really encourage and invite other neighborhood areas to do the same kind of thing. The Upper State Street study was one version of how it could be done when the city oversees it, but as we all know, that took a whole year and a lot of staff resources. And those are things we really don't have right now, given everything else that we know we need to do. But that doesn't mean we're going to ignore the West Side or Milpiss area or, you know, Las Pecitas Valley or things like that. In fact, we encourage, I encourage, people to come together as a neighborhood, go to the open house, get the documents, and figure out, okay, how does this work for a city as a whole, and how does this work in my own area? How does this impact my life and my family? And, and if there's a group that comes together in a certain part of the city and wants to see how the overarching policies affect the big picture and the more microcosm picture in their neighborhood, fantastic. That's what we're really asking for, and that's the kind of comments I hope we get from, the Planning Commission receives, and then we also receive. And I, I do have to say, even though there's been a lot of debate or criticism about the amount of time and energy and money spent on, on the documents up to date, which frankly we haven't seen yet, so it's hard to, to critique them, my experience on the council, some of the things that needed to be corrected, I think, are being corrected through this process. There's been a couple of issues that's come before the council where the general plan map did not align with the land use map or some other zoning policy, and there were appeals based on that, um, different interpretations of how the land use map worked. And to clean those things up, I think, will be extremely important. So that I look forward to. That goes beyond even the general plan update as a philosophy model, but actually hands-on, a hands-on logistical approach when we look at parcel by parcel by parcel, if issues like modifications or things come up. Those things will get cleaned up, and I think that's really, really good. And then finally, I, I think in terms of putting this in perspective, again, if you could put up the scenarios up here, and look at what are we really talking about when we mean increased density or slow growth or managed growth? Last night, I attended a sister city dinner for Weihi. And why am I bringing up China here? Well, you know, China, Weihi, China's a sister city of Santa Barbara. When it became a sister city in 1987, I think, it was what they called a small city of 300,000 people, or somewhere around there. I visited it in 2004, and it was a small city of 500,000 people, and five years later, it's almost doubled in size. And so that is, you know, and there's no way we're going to be, the Santa Barbara's going to be anything like that, not even close. So when we're talking about increased density and where that density goes and how much growth we're talking about, let's put it in perspective a bit, and let's talk about how then housing and transportation and open space all intertwine with each other. And to go back to what was said earlier of, if we're looking at density, it's not just, it's not only how much, but where does it go? And, and the Plan Santa Barbara, as was mentioned before, the plan document is, commercial is less than what we have right now, same number of housing units. And then there's the question of, even if we don't like that, there, there are other options. And I think that's part of the negotiation we'll be moving forward, looking at in the next several months. Mr. Hotchkiss, I do want to go back. He asked a question about a straw vote for modus. Frankly, I don't know what that would mean to do that right here and now. I think that's, I appreciate your sentiment and obviously your opinion that you want to get rid of the modus, and I think that's a fine opinion to have. But to take that out of context with everything else here personally, I think that will kind of confuse the matter. But there's certainly, in my opinion, plenty of time for debate and discussion about that after, especially after we get the documents in hand, unless someone else really wants to push for a straw vote, but I don't see how that's really going to help us today. I think today was about getting all, all of us up to speed, what's happened up to now, what we can look forward to. The timeline in front of us is, is an aggressive one, but an absolutely necessary one, and for lots of reasons, I think, not only for state compliance, but just for the psyche of our community to get this thing done after so many years of conversations. So those are my comments, and did you want to mention something?
Yeah, just on that topic that you were just talking about, kind of the straw vote concept, the way we kind of had it laid out strategically to get us through this year is that the next meeting would be a joint meeting of the council and Planning Commission, and that we do want to kind of take essentially some straw votes on some key issues, so that then we can kind of go wrap up in the direction that council is leaning towards. And so the overall kind of game plan is, let's get the documents out, let's live with them over the while, study them up, let's have the Planning Commission take some additional public input on the documents and have some dialogue with them, and then working with the commission, maybe we can frame some of those kind of key straw vote dialogues that we need to have at the joint meeting in June. And that joint meeting in June's going to be a tough, big meeting. It might be a two-day meeting, because I think you'll have more public comment than you had today. It'll be long, and, and so, you know, we'll kind of strategically set it up, though, but create it so that it's a good dialogue, so that then the commission and staff get some direction about how to go forward and start wrapping it up.
Okay, thank you. And then I just want to end my comments, and then I see another light on, by really acknowledging the Planning Commission for hours upon hours upon hours of work that you've done, and, I don't see more gray hair than before, but I think internally it might, you know, feel like, hopefully not. But I, I do want to acknowledge and welcome the two new commissioners. You got your work cut out for you this year, and I'm sure you are reading and studying as much as you can, as, as fast as you can, because this is a pivotal year for everyone. So whatever I can do in my office to assist, but I think you have it down as long as we stay focused, get this thing done, use the DEIR strategically. I think we'll have a fascinating, exciting year with actual facts on the ground that we can finally make some, some policy movement. So thank you for that. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Jostis brought up an idea of, of creating a subcommittee, which I certainly would be glad to serve on. And I think that at some point, perhaps not today, as Mr. Casey brings up, the ultimate general plan, Plan Santa Barbara meeting, and whenever that is, but I, I could picture that as being a useful tool for cutting to the chase a little bit and triaging and getting ourselves sort of more focused sooner. So I just wanted to at least say that that, the idea makes sense to me, and I certainly be supportive of it and willing to serve on that subcommittee if that were to, if the council thought that's a good idea.
Okay, Mr. House?
To staff, when is the final EIR, I mean, coming out after all the work has been done and after all the comments from the public? When will we have that? There's a draft EIR moment in April, you say here, but when will we have all the information as decision-makers that we can use it as the sequel process expects us to?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, that would be in September, when it comes back to the Planning Commission. That, you know, typically after the 60-day review period ends, which begins March 18th, then it's response to comments, and staff and EIR consultants will take the time necessary to respond to all the comments we receive, either through public hearings or written comments, and I might underscore, we prefer those written comments. And then we'll produce the final document, the final EIR, and that's scheduled to go to the Planning Commission in September.
So I just, Madam Mayor, I just want to sort of weigh in on this a little bit. I have a, a concern for myself for, to come to like conclusions prior to having all the information in front of me. For me, it's, I, I mean, I understand from a process perspective how important it is that we keep this moving, and we make sure we are still encouraging people to participate. On the other hand, I am mentally strongly reserved, and this is for me personally as a city council member, and I hope others feel similarly at least, from making strong conclusions prior to having all the information in and being fully informed, so I can make a, a good, quality-informed decision. That's why I resist issues, attempts to make decisions like right now, straw votes or others, prior to us actually having information in front of us. This is still not fully vetted, and I think that, at least for the city council, we, we can listen to other people's conclusions and opinions and whatever, encouraging us to go one way or another. But I hope we have the discipline to wait until we have all the information in front of us before we really begin to make final decisions on the, on the general plan.
Okay. Any other comments? Just to get to Mr. White's point of a subcommittee that was brought up, I think, I'm not quite sure what, I mean, staff or Mr. Jostis have a job description of what it would mean besides starting negotiations, which frankly, I think we need to have as a group as opposed to three people, because the, I don't want to be pretending I'm representing other people on the council beyond myself, so unless Mr. Jostis, you had an idea of what exactly, beyond making sure we stay on task, because I'm sure we'll all be making sure we stay on task and on timeline, what a subcommittee would be doing. But, Mr. Casey, do you want to?
And I don't, I will not speak for Mr. Jostis, because it's the first I've heard of it today, so I haven't had a chance to think it through. I think it would have to be a Brown Act subcommittee, and so that means public comment, noticed, open meetings. And so, you know, can we do it? Yes, it's more staff resource, time and effort to structure that. If council feels that's the best way structurally to kind of move forward, we can do it, but it's really up to the council.
Perhaps we can discuss that more offline about what exactly you're thinking about and how, if, how it fits in with the overall goal of making sure we move forward in an expeditious manner, without taking away from any policy discussions that need to happen in an open meeting with all seven of us. Does that sound okay? Okay. Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, I just, that, as Mr. Francisco said, the, the Policy Preference Document is one that has, are there non-starters in there? And if there are non-starters, let's not start them. That's the point I'm making.
I, I would agree with that statement. I believe this joint council/Planning Commission meeting might be the place where that would go, where all 14 of us can have that conversation and not six.
I appreciate that. And again, we, we get back to needing five votes, and that's in June, so that's March, that's the month of February, month of March, month of April, month of May. That's four months lost, and I just put those out there as, we're trying to get this done in a year. That's using four months up before we even, whereas there may be some triage material here that came out of the election, that we may be able to then focus down our effort. So that's, that's the point of, I have a feeling that that's a bit of what Mr. Jostis is talking about, and it certainly is what I, at least how I'm interpreting it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams?
You know, I, Bendy, I, I disagree that that would be the way to handle something. If we operate by veto, where any one of, where, where, you know, we can veto any aspect in there, then there's not going to be anything worth doing by the end of it. It'll be in tatters. And, and I would argue that, that there are some, a non-starter in some cases is to not do some things, because I agree with your first sentiment, which is that the status quo is not working well to either control growth or to provide middle-income affordable housing. And, and so from both of our factions, the status quo should be, I think, viewed as the, as a, as a, as not what we should be doing.
Okay, any other comments? I think we can keep this idea in our minds and see, to me personally, I need to see the documents in front of us to figure out what the draft EIR says before we go into any kind of starters, non-starters. And I'm wary of having smaller meetings that are not with the full discussion of this particular council to try to preempt some kind of decision-making ahead of time. So that, at least to start, we might want to direct a smaller group of people after the joint, joint subcommittee to work on some specifics, but I don't know the answer to that yet. So that's how I would suggest that. Anything else from staff? Okay, look at that, under-promise, over-deliver, okay? It's 11:30, and thank you all for being here, and stay tuned for a lot of information coming your way.